Start with a flag and then a moment of silence.
The United States. One nation under God, indivisible, and they were taken to justice.
Okay, just want to go over our procedures. We have a pretty good crowd tonight. I'm going to change the order of the agenda, the approval of. Third Yard Road is on as the first thing we're going to talk about, but I think you already think of that. They've asked me already about the. The procedure that we go through is we will have the applicant present, who requests for the grant. Reasons why it's necessary. The board questions the applicants. After the board and applicants are comfortable with the information presented. The floor is then open to the audience in the meeting and on Zoom. All questions are directed to the board, not to the applicant. Each person, particularly tonight because of the number of people we have here. The comments should be limited to five minutes. Also, I would just request if you're wanting to comment that just reflects what somebody else just said. Please. We don't need to hear some things that, you know, the mentality. When the applicant and the board. Are comfortable that all this necessary information is presented, the public hearing will be closed. It can be carried over to the next meeting if further information is needed. Zoning Board has sixty-two days to consider vote on the application. Usually it's done on the same night, but it depends on. If there are any questions that we want to mention. Okay. First one is Anthony Venecia. Regarding County Road. Sixteen.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Destro from BME Associates. Here on behalf of Venecia Associates, the applicant. Anthony Venecia is in attendance. We are here for an Arians application for the Ashton Place South subdivision. The subject property totals forty-four point one acres and it's located in the town of Canandaigua's Southern Corridor Residential. SCR one zoning district. And the scenic viewshed overlay district per the NRI MAP eleven, which is the lands visible from Canandaigua Lake. The subject property is located on the west side of West Lake Road, County Road sixteen. And to the south of Ashton Place and Bedford Drive. We are seeking. An area variance to allow a reduction of the minimum lot area in the scenic viewshed overlay district from one acre, which is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet. To twenty thousand square feet or roughly half an acre. Per Town Code, section two twenty dash thirty-three point one D one. The scenic viewshed overlay district. I'll quote, density and minimum lot size. The minimum lot size in the SVO district shall not be less than one acre. Or the minimum lot size of the underlying zoning district, whichever is greater. In the SVO district, the use of conservation subdivisions shall not result in a lot smaller than one acre. This proposal is for a conservation subdivision, which is pursuant to section two seventy-eight. The cluster subdivisions section of the New York Town Law. And also per section one seventy-four dash sixteen, the cluster subdivisions provision of the Town Code. This proposal is for thirty-eight. Single-family homes on lots with minimum lot area, as I mentioned, of twenty thousand square feet. Per the town's cluster subdivision guidelines, this proposal protects over forty percent of the area of the parent parcel. Within permanent conservation easements. The goals of the Town Code per section one seventy-four six sixteen include, there's five of them, I'll just recite them for everybody's benefit. Number one. Achieve a balance between well-designed development, meaningful open space conservation. And natural resource protection in the town of Canandaigua. By requiring conservation subdivisions instead of conventional subdivisions. Number two, allow for residential development on lots that are smaller. Than would be otherwise permitted in the applicable zoning district in exchange for the protection of conservation assets. Identified in the town's inventory. The third goal identified in the Town Code. Encourage the placement of lots and design of streets in a manner that results in a more efficient. Provision of infrastructure and delivery of public services. And that supports a walkable and socially cohesive community. The fourth goal, maintain and preserve the natural agricultural scenic and cultural assets identified in the town's. Natural resource in inventory. And the last one. Advance the goals of the town's comprehensive plan. This proposal meets all of those goals that I just listed. Per NRA MAP eleven. Lands visible from Canandaigua Lake. Portions of the subject property are shown. As being visible from Canandaigua Lake on the map. However, we have provided viewshed photo exhibits. Which were taken from the Canandaigua Country Club on the east side of Canandaigua Lake, looking west towards the subject property. The viewshed photo exhibits that show the proposed single-family home development. They show that the single-family home development will be screened. From Canandaigua Lake due to the existing tree buffer along West Lake Road. The photos we should mention were taken in the early spring of this year, twenty twenty-five. During the most visible dormant season of the year for the existing vegetation. Only a few roof peaks, as you can see on the exhibit to my left. From the adjoining Bedford Drive or Ashton Place, single-family subdivisions to the north are visible. The natural screening of the subject property is further enhanced with the annual, as the annual foliage exists or develops, I should say. The viewshed photo exhibits indicate that the NRI MAP eleven may not accurately represent the subject property. By showing it within the SVO district. With this application, we've also provided additional exhibits. To support this application. The first one being a surrounding neighborhood exhibit, if you're able to pull that up. Perfect. So the surrounding neighborhood exhibit shows that seventy-nine properties which are adjacent to. Or near the Ashton Place project site have areas that are already less than one acre. Therefore, the proposed lot sizes are in character with the surrounding neighborhood. Including all of the lots in Bedford Drive and Ashton Place to the north. We've also provided conventional plan exhibits. The conventional plan aerial exhibit, if you're able to pull that up. Yeah, and we do have another one provided too that has an aerial image, but that just shows. They show that by complying with the Town Code requirement for the underlying SCR one and SVO, this one, correct? No, that's the cluster development plan. There you go. Right there, that one. Yes. So the conventional plan shows that by complying with the Town Code requirement for the underlying SCR one. And SVO districts, the parcel as developed with one acre lots. Would not include any open space areas in permanent conservation easements. And the individual lot owners could technically remove virtually all the trees on their individual lots. And it is important to note that there is no residential buffering requirement. From SCR one zoning from residential to residential, so. Per conventional plan, no buffering requirements are required per the Town Code. We did present this application to the Ontario County Planning Board on October ninth. And they did vote unanimously in favor of the proposed cluster subdivision development. With reduced lot sizes at a minimum twenty thousand square feet. It should be noted. That the way the Town Code is written, it prevents conservation cluster subdivision from being constructed on the subject property without a variance. As the underlying SCR one zoning district currently has a required. A requirement for minimum one acre lots and any parcel shown within the SVO district must have a minimum lot area of one acre. Finally, in summary, the Town Code and Comprehensive Plan recommends single-family subdivisions. Be developed via cluster subdivision approach, which is what we are doing. And with smaller lot sizes, which is what we are doing, and this is to protect the town's natural resources. And reduce the development footprint on the property. And this is exactly what our proposal does. So. And that this is, this is our proposed development. And you can see. The forty percent. Provided in conservation easement areas represents the wooded areas, the existing vegetated areas. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Correct, in the southeastern corner. Correct. No. So the runoff that goes to that pond will be captured by. The road network and the associated storm sewer system and directed south to the proposed stormwater management pond. Which will help collect and detain and release the runoff at controlled rates, less than the peak. Existing conditions. Downstream of the houses that have had. Previous flooding conditions within that stream. But it should be noted that the majority of. The runoff causing the issues in that stream is from the north, north of Ashton Place. And not associated with this development, but any runoff. So the, the existing topography from the site is basically from the northwestern corner to the southeastern corner. This development will capture and detain that runoff, as I mentioned. It's around thirty feet, but it should be mentioned that this provides conservation, permanent conservation easement on all sides of the property, the north, east, west, south. And. Given the nature of the site, the geometry of the site, it's a longer rectangular site. We're balancing the design on the existing topography of the ground, trying to balancing out cuts and fills. But also balancing the conservation easement areas and providing large contiguous areas on all sides of the proposed development footprint. The. Conservation easement area that's in the center on the south. It extends to the east, that's probably seven to eight acres. And then the one that extends from the west along the north side. That's around twelve point two acres, I believe. So you have two large areas of at least six acres on the west. And north, and then also another area of seven acres on the south and east as well. So this balances it out rather than just providing the conservation easement areas on one side, east, west, north, south. We're providing on all the sides of this and balancing, I think, rather effectively with this proposed layout.
Chris Nambu said microphone arm picking you guys up, so he wants you to. Anybody having any other questions here? You've filled the number of houses on this slide. On this parcel. We've gone from twenty to forty-two.
I've never been a part of any previous applications with twenty lots, but we did provide a conventional plan. Showing the. Were to be developed under the underlying zoning with one acre lots. It's showing that thirty-eight one acre lots can be developed on this parcel with the conventional plan. The cluster development takes that thirty-eight lots and just. Provides them on a smaller footprint, smaller development footprint. Less utilities to be dedicated and owned and maintained by the town of Canandaigua, which is the preference, and then also providing. A smaller development footprint. A smaller disturbance area, and then while also providing, as I mentioned. At least forty percent open space permanent conservation easement areas. Correct, under the conventional plan, no open space areas or permanent easements are required. So this could be developed, there would be no buffering between. The houses to the north, the houses to the east. The cluster development plan that we're proposing provides the conservation easement areas and the buffering on all sides, as I mentioned. Correct. Well, via Ashton Place, not, not a separate one, just, just one, correct? There is property out to County Road sixteen, but that is going to be conveyed to the existing landowner to the south. Correct. So it encompasses that driveway. I've been in front of the planning board for sketch plan review. I've been in front of the PRC several times now reviewing this application, gaining their input. And all of the input that we've received, we've incorporated into this proposed cluster concept, or cluster subdivision plan. Well, we're providing forty percent open space areas, at least thirteen acres of woods are being preserved. With this, all of the dark green is the wooded or natural existing vegetation areas. Outside of the lighter green areas, that represents the lawns for the proposed lots. Yes. The applicant has discussed that with the property owners to the south. But at this point, there's, there's no agreement or plan in place for any roadway to be extended through their property. That's per the International and New York State Fire Code requirement.
Mr. Ryan, there is. Forty-two in this.
Thirty-eight.
If I look at that, I see forty-two.
You're, you're correct, my apologies. So this was, this was the sketch plan that was provided to the planning board. We've since submitted an overall preliminary and final phase one, which shows thirty-eight lots. My apologies. Yes. We've removed four lots.
The same, what I'm trying to get at is this is in essence the same number. Only clustered.
Correct. Yep. When we first started, we were thinking about applying for the additional density credit with the town board, but we've since removed that. And updated the layout to only show thirty-eight lots. What's that? Yeah, that's fine. That will have a cover sheet. Yes, and, and, correct, so we removed them from the existing steep slope areas. Yes, I mean. We, I did address them in the meeting, there are no wetlands on site that are being disturbed with this development. The existing stream are providing. The required one hundred foot buffer for the class C stream, because it's classified as a class one land. Um. We've had preliminary discussions with our GNE and they have indicated, they have not indicated that they do not have power. And we are working on the will serve letter now. We were just corresponding with them this morning again.
Can you repeat yourself? You cannot be heard by the people.
Right now, according to our GNE, anything south of five and twenty that you want to develop more than a few homes. There's power on the south side of Canandaigua, north side of Canandaigua, any developments to bring housing to Canandaigua. There is no power and our GNE will not serve. Without a large sum of money. They already shut down. Other development on the northeast side of town. That's a twenty-five million dollar upgrade to get power to that side.
We can address that when, when you're ready.
Yes.
Please protect your comments to five minutes.
My name is Stephanie Caniff. I live at forty-eight fifty-nine Ashton Place. I've lived there for twenty-three years. I am a registered independent and I vote. So I am very happy to be part of this community. I love Canandaigua. I raised my kids here. I've seen growth and prosperity over the last twenty-three years. I'm not opposed to growth. I want our community to prosper, but I am opposed to reckless behavior. And putting thirty-eight houses on this lot is reckless, and I will tell you why. They want to hook up to the sewer system that Ashton Place has. That sewer system was built. Over, I think it started in nineteen eighty-five. For the twenty-four houses that are there. In twenty twenty-three, we had a major flood. When I moved into my house, my husband and I spent twenty-eight thousand dollars to finish our basement. With built-ins, a media room, a little kitchenette. A desk or an office and then a homework area with desks and carpeting and all of these built-ins. And in the summer of twenty twenty-three. Firemen stood in and pumped out over fifteen inches of water from my basement. I fought with my insurance company for a year and a half. They said I didn't have the rider. I signed up for it right away. And then six months later, they sent me a thing that's. Saying that they weren't going to cover me because I. Made a claim, even though they said I didn't have the insurance at the time. So that is on my insurance now, so I can't get. A rider for drainage. The drains are too small. People talked to me, a lawyer said you need to do a class action suit against the town. There are a lot of people that lost over. My loss was more than fifty thousand dollars with all the couches and media equipment and there was, you know, a bed and. I don't want to sue the town. I don't want to do a class action suit. You're me, you know, we're part of this community together. But I darn sure want to make sure that this doesn't happen again. The drains are too small and it's not about drainage ponds, because there was a huge pond right across the street from my house, Kitty Corner. That didn't even really fill up or overflow. It's the drains. The fireman stood in my. Basement and he said, the water is going in my boots. His big, and he's like, I'm looking at the, it's not coming in the windows. Where's it coming from? It's town water coming back up through the drains. So. There is on the website, because we did this. Well, I think that some pictures have been submitted, but please take a look at the. The water, it wasn't going into the pond. It's flowing down because. Up behind where Ashton Place is, is the hospital, right? And I please encourage you, take a drive up there and you will see. Canandaigua Medical Group, they've paved a whole bunch of stuff and they've put three more buildings. Huge office buildings and that are all up on that hill and it's been paved. Las Vegas floods, the strip floods every now and then now because. They've paved everything, you know, it's a desert and there's nowhere for the water to go. And that's what happened here, that. The water's going to flow down the hill and what you don't see from this development is that this is a hill. This isn't flat land. It is built on a hill. And there is not a drainage system. They want to hook up to ours and I'm telling you. The drainage system is insufficient for all the paving that has happened, for the storms that we're getting now. And for the houses that we have. I'm not the only one who flooded because of that storm. And so it would be reckless to add. More houses into that same drainage system. My other concern is. The watershed laws and the zoning laws requiring. An acre, I would ask that the zoning committee not back down on that. There's no reason why houses can't be built on acre properties with conservation land around them. And if you drive along West Lake Road to get to Ashton Place, he showed you those seventy-nine houses. Most of those people think those houses are too tight and are not happy with it. And when you drive along West Lake Road to come to our beautiful little cul-de-sac of Ashton Place, you will see that. The road is narrow, right? So it's very narrow, even when they're, when they snowplow, sometimes it's like, is there still two lanes here? So I am very concerned. I would request. As a matter of public record, that they do a traffic study looking at, you know, you add thirty-eight houses. Figure two cars, right? That's seventy-two cars more in and out. Every day to and from work, maybe go get the kids from swim or whatever they do. That little road cannot hold there. Also, the fact that there's only one way in and one way out. I'm not a lawyer, but I believe that there are laws about having. That it's necessary after a certain amount of houses, you know, cul-de-sac can have only so many, so I would request that you not back down on that either. Is that my five minutes is up? Okay, all right.
Can she have my five minutes?
No, we can't, you can't transfer minutes.
Oh, okay, well.
So Stephanie, I'll continue because I'm Jackie Leidl, four eight five four Ashton Place, so folks will be coming right in through, right in front of our house. And we were also one of the ones that. Right in front of our house and we were also one of the ones that flooded out in twenty twenty three. We also happened to flood out. Three years before that. So I emphasize the drainage is not enough. I know that there's some leverage in terms of using the rules that were built for Ashton Place in using. Approval for this new development. It's not enough capacity. There will be more flooding and there will be more issues coming with thirty eight more houses there. So. I won't repeat more, but just know that there's more damage that's been done with the drainage existing. We can't have anymore.
Uh, the first point, the drainage issues in Ashton Place are upstream of this property. They're higher in elevation of this property. They're not associated with this development. The runoff on this property will never go north to Ashton Place. It only goes south and west. And east towards the existing stream. Um, so those issues are not related. We are not connecting to the Ashton Place storm sewer system. We're building, this project will construct a private storm sewer system on our site. That directs runoff to the pond in the southeastern corner, which is the farthest point away from Ashton Place and Bedford Drive to the north. The lot sizes, as I pointed out, there's seventy nine lots. Including all of Ashton Place, all of Bedford Drive that are less than an acre. Bedford Drive lots are equivalent or less than in size than than the lots that we're proposing on this development. Um, traffic study in our engineer's report for the overall preliminary site plan application. We did provide trip calc general or we we provide trip calc's. The town will review them and. That the requirement for any traffic studies will be based on input from Ontario County DPW. And there will be forwarded the engineer's report as well. So it's up to them. It's their roadway and their road network. Ashton Place ends in a. It terminates at our property line. It was always intended for an extension for future development on this property. And the main point that I'd like to bring up that we are not debating the density or the number of lots with this area variance application. Thirty eight is what the conventional plan shows. We're not debating that. That's not the topic of on this agenda tonight. It's whether. Uh, cluster subdivision is provides more benefit to the community than the conventional subdivision does. And what we've outlined in this proposal certainly shows that our proposal provides more benefits to the community. The forty percent open space and permanent conservation easement areas buffering around all sides of the property. Um, it is a definite benefit and also, as I mentioned, the town code, the town code recommends a conservation subdivision over the cluster subdivision. Or over the conventional subdivision. So we're following the outline of the town code. We're following the recommendations of the town's comprehensive plan. And.
I'm Jack Kellogg. I live at forty eight fifty one Ashton. Been there since. Who knows when before then I was at thirty three eighty eight Wesley Road was the red house on the corner of Ashton Place. I moved there in something like eighty five or eighty six. And anyway. Been there as a great neighborhood and all the rest of that jazz, but the whole problem that I've seen is runoff. It's not just coming off Ashton Place. It's coming down from the land that is intended to be developed. If you take sixty percent of non pervious materials and you, you know, reduce it by sixty percent. You're going to wind up with some some kind of drainage issues. And according to a BME letter that was sent to the board. That this particular property has grades greater than fifteen percent. That presents another problem with fire codes. Fire codes, you're restricted to ten percent maximum grade. You also have restrictions that something that was developed back in the eighties for twenty four homes. Is not going to take care of whether it be sewer or water, not going to take care of, you know, you know, twice, three times the capacity. The. Other problem with the fire codes is that when you get above twenty four homes, you have an egress problem. The currently is required and you have to have your alternate or another egress somehow, you know, beyond that limit. And they're closing down on that number of homes as well. The runoff is has been a problem, not just Ashton, but coming off the land that you're talking about. It happened back in twenty eleven. We've got pictures. Happened back in twenty seventeen, twenty twenty three. And here we are looking at what, what, when's the next one going to be? So it looks every five or six years, we've got a problem. And from what one of the town engineers told me. Is that some of that stuff comes from Middle Cheshire. I don't know how that can be controlled before it gets to this property because this property is downland from Middle Cheshire Road. So there's a graduating problem. And no matter where you put a pond. It's still going to affect those that are on the recipient end on West Lake Road below where the proposed pond is going to be. And you, these, it's only one pipe that goes under Ashton, taking care of two pipes that are coming from the. Retention ponds at Ferris Hills. And there's only one retain, one pipe going under West Lake Road. Jim Fletcher says, yeah, that maybe have to be changed. That's another deal because now you're talking about the county level and, you know, more water going under West Lake Road to handle the runoff. If that happens. Now you're talking with watershed people because can, do you want to put that a volume of water into the lake? That fast without some sort of retention, some sort of, you know, pullback, some sort of, you know. Where it can be absorbed into the ground rather pushing it all the way to the lake as fast as you can. So I, I hope you guys will will consider and ladies will consider the enormity of this thing. It's not new. The land has been there. It would be really, really good if somehow it was put into. Finger Lakes Land Trust or something like that. It could be written off on taxes. Tax people can do that. It's like that kind of stuff. So. There are other ways this land can be taken care of. So.
That's one of the reasons why towns and municipalities recommend a cluster subdivision approach because it shrinks the development footprint. There's less roads that are required, less storm water sanitary that are infrastructure that's required with the cluster subdivision. When you do a conventional layout, you have more road networks, more utilities to maintain. I may have. I don't recall it offhand.
Yeah, well, so some of the questions they have in there are actually directly related that they said they are in favor most kinds of cluster. But in their letter, they're stating that some of the things are not clear and that they're not necessarily in favor of this, that there's lacking details. So. And it's very specific and it gets it quote, so maybe this is something you should, you know, maybe.
So we just submitted the overall preliminary design, including the engineering report calc's last week. I don't know that they've had the time to review that. That really isn't associated with this area variance application. Again, we will handle that with this. With the, um, the site plan application or the subdivision application and review with the planning board at that that time. Yes. And what I would mention again, that the, that the runoff. And the drainage issues that they're representing on Bedford Drive and Ashton Place to the north are not related to this project. They're from drainage areas that are offsite to the north. Our site is below an elevation of that property. And does not drain north to Bedford Drive or Ashton Place. What I will say is that. Part of our engineering design for the overall preliminary subdivision application includes a full stormwater management analysis and design. Um, it's been designed for the town of Canada, Dwa, stormwater management regulations. It's also been designed for the DEC stormwater management design guidelines. It will be reviewed by the town engineer. The town staff at town, at the town of Canada, Dwa, as well as the DEC for compliance with their stormwater regulations. And just to go back, the grades mentioned above, the fifteen percent slopes. We're saving them in the proposed conservation easement area. They're located in the north or the southwestern corner where we remove those lots. That's to protect those existing grades. That has, that's not associated whatsoever with the proposed grades of the road network that we've designed for the subdivision. The road grades meet the town of Canada was. Vertical slope guidelines, eight percent or less. We're complying with that. We're nowhere near fifteen percent. That is the existing slopes that we're maintaining in a, in a permanent conservation easement area in the southwestern corner of the property. And then the egress, that's also handled with the one egress that's handled by. Adhering to the New York State Fire Code as well as the International Fire Code, which stipulates. You only need a secondary access if the houses aren't going to be sprinkler. The houses are going to be sprinkled. That negates the requirement for the secondary access. Thank you.
Uh, Bill Foose, thirty four twenty, Conner Road sixteen. Can I do some pointing on the there?
This where the pond is going to be? We're right there. Now, where's the creek here? Right here?
Right down the backside here.
We moved here in two thousand and six and we hadn't had any trouble till like two thousand and eleven, twenty three. But all of this right here, all along here, water, one, that creek. When that big storm comes, nothing comes out of that. It doesn't even fill up. And all the water comes down through here and it's eroding all the way down through here. So what about all these lots here? How is that going to get water into the pond?
They're higher than the pond. They're going to discharge directly into the pond over grade. Yes.
Um, I'm sorry. We don't want any discussion between you. We get directed to us and I make them up.
So that's why I wanted to look. He's lots right here. Where's the water behind them going to go? Because right now that whole. Area, there's all kinds of small streams out of that into that right. They're not going to run. They're not going to turn and go down here.
So there's a swell that will convey that runoff to the pond to the lower and. All of this is covered in the subdivision application that that really doesn't pertain to this area variance application. Once again. We're not questioning density or anything. It's really to accept the benefit of the proposed cluster subdivision development.
Bobby Ames, forty eight sixty Bedford Drive. I'm a New York State Certified Codes Official. Uh, two questions. Has the Water Authority been consulted on this additional? Service required for the sprinklers. And the reason why I say that is I'm since retired. But when I get up in the morning to shower on occasion, the water pressure on Bedford is extremely low. So I just wanted to have that question. The second question I had is the. The roadway per se is there, and I can't tell from here. What's the width of the roadway and is it adequate for? Canada was fire apparatus to be able to get up through the cul-de-sac, the bends and all that thing. Thank you.
I know that those are, you know, I know that's a planning question, but.
We have talked to Jim. There's that with pressure. And it is, it is a town designed road. It's a dedicated town road. It's the same size as Bedford. Bedford is. It's sixty foot right away. It is a town road, no different than you drive through Fox Ridge or drive through Bedford now. It is. The legal size that we are required to turn over to the town in dedication. So it's be a dedicated road bound will eventually take care of. So it's up to all their standards and up their specs. They've increased their specs over the years.
Again, I guess. Our question here tonight. Whether we approve a variance before allowing to do subdivision.
I hear you, sir. Can't hear you.
Uh, the question tonight really is, would we grant a variance for this development? To be done as a conservation. And history or would it, you know, but they are. Just by their own, they could put the other.
See, we don't have to find out. They can develop the property regardless. It's just whether we vote whether this is. The type of development that we want and that are allowed for, you know, because it is outside there. We do have the brand things. In other words, to for that, for that lot size. So regardless, there's going to be development, but it's. Just how that's going to be.
The cluster is better than a convention.
Right. And whether it falls into that conservation type of development.
Will there be a public hearing?
Yeah, well, that would be.
Greetings. My name is Dan Russell. I live at three, four, five, six, County Road sixteen. Thank you for your service. Words cannot express. How much I agree with Stephanie who spoke about against making the variance. But I'll try. I have some questions. Is it possible for the zoning board? To separate out whether or not this is a cluster that's conservation oriented? And whether or not the lot size is X or Y? Can you do both? Can you maintain the one acre lot size with the cluster conservation concept? Can you do that for us? If you do, you will be, I think, forward thinking and able as leaders. To see down the road. Because down the road, as you're hearing, there's going to be a lot of suffering. We have already suffered greatly because of climate change, because of the way the storms are increasing. My house is moving. It's actually splitting. And it's not because so much of development. But because of the way the weather is changing. And with this development. And the limited. Vision for preparing for the reality on the ground, which we see every day. The limited vision for this project for conservation of the stormwater runoff. Is quite concerning and that's my main point. But I also want to ask. What was the length of the traffic study in terms of its time duration? You should know how long that was. I would want you to ask that question. I would also wonder. Is it really true that there is electric power? As stated earlier in the meeting, or is that wishful thinking? I realize that this project is going through. I hope that you. I realize that this project is going through. I hope that you can see that as it is. It is not equal to the character of this beautiful place. Ashton Place is beautiful, the way it's laid out. Something comparable with larger lot size will maintain the character of this beautiful area. And so I speak in favor. Final question. Would you please delineate some of the other questions that were delineated by the Canandaigua Lake Watershed Association in their letter tonight? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, again, I mean, I could give you their concerns, but they're, it doesn't necessarily.
Okay, that's fine. If, if the letter is accessible, that's all I'm asking for.
Yeah, I think the issue of traffic. Probably isn't really pertinent. How's a conventional development up there? Is it having the same number of cars going in and out?
Thank you very much for your time and your leadership.
Yeah, I'm Jack Day. I live on Bedford Drive. My question is. How long is this project going to take? Do they have to set a time limit? Can they build one house and sell it and then build another one and so on and so forth? Okay, I just wonder what that's going to do with all that mud and stuff that's going to be coming out of there for six years. So.
Rough on basing it. There's three phases, ten, you know, trying to do it that way where most of it will be built out of the. You know, grass will be grown everything before we gave the next phase.
You've got certainly a concern, the concern whether it's a conventional or as a conservation. It's the same.
Right. Right.
As much wood, wooded areas, there might be less.
Well, that's what was in the building.
Hello, Susan Foose, thirty-four twenty. I'm sure. Susan Foose, thirty-four twenty, County Road sixteen. My concern is that they have enough money to do this project. So we don't have a project that sits like the birdhouse in Canandaigua that starts and that can't finish.
That's actually not.
Okay. And my other concern is was as my husband's, the water, we, it is on a hill and all that water does come down into the creek. There's little streams all the way along that creek and that's all coming from that property and it's only going to be worse when they do that. Thank you very much for your help.
Anybody online?
Hi, I'm Maya DeRosa. I'm from Bedford Drive. I was a little left a little confused about. The watershed in that they showed a nice picture with no tree, no leaves on the trees. And then that looked okay, right there. Yet then later on, it was mentioned that the property owners will have a right to cut down any trees they want in their property. That changes this picture big time.
The conservation plan. All those treaties that they showed have to say.
Okay, that's not what was mentioned.
People could cut down. We can't restrict what they can cut down on their lots.
There's a way on the can if it's over a certain amount as long as it's supposed to be. It's limited, but it's a great big number.
Planning board actually would have to do that. That's not something.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody online?
Yes, unless the board has any additional questions for me that I can help clarify. Yes, yep. I would just ask if you, if you have any questions that are holding you up from making a determination tonight, please let me know and I can help address them.
You're welcome to wait around. Discuss it. No deliberations. No further input for you made at that time. But we think we probably could make it. Night probably. That's what we have on the one other thing on the end of which we probably put off. So you're welcome to stay around for a little bit.
Can I just ask a question about processes? They mentioned a board that had unanimously voted October ninth. For this development. And there was no public hearing?
They haven't public yet. There was.
When was it and how was it? Notified. How was the public?
Sent down notifications to people within a certain area, correct?
I don't think any one of us were notified.
Yeah, I don't know if the county.
County doesn't, isn't under our jurisdiction as far as sending to.
They might not get the info from the website.
Yeah.
If the county recommends that we deny the variance. Then we have to have a super majority overcome counties. But they voted to.
On the variance, but the, but the, has the. Actual proposal for this been approved then? I guess that's what I'm asking.
It hasn't gone, the, this, the full subdivision based on the cluster has not gone to Ontario County. It will be published. They just, they meet once a month. So just keep an eye out for their.
There's still. Do the county first or do the town? So you can keep track of the Ontario County Planning Board and try to see when they're meeting or assuming it probably will be coming up.
Probably that's what they, I'm not sure. I don't have this getting.
Thank you.
Yes, since they, since they. They're okay with slowing the variance. We just have to have a simple majority meeting. And then if the one who has the other.
I'm not sure. I got, I got all the time. Yeah, I'm okay hopefully.
The need. Standards is certainly either way, not going to be too clear that there's no change in that. I heard a lot of comments against the entire proposal. But I didn't hear too many comments against, you know, the cluster plan versus the convention. And, and I do believe that, that it probably is less surface area that will run off with the clusters than it would be like invention.
Because of the lot, you have to have four percent property to be a conservation, it's letting the land, that's be forty percent.
There's a whole gamut that goes from here, no matter where, which way we go here. I mean, the reality is that this vote, if the variance is denied, it still continues. And that's the way this has been.
Yeah, we do think, we deny it. We're going to take the conventional plan.
But does that work so?
The cluster plan has the easement areas and.
Sorry.
The, the cluster has easement areas or the conventional button, I mean, conservation areas and shit.
That's classified.
Compared to the original site plan they had. Taking one street blocks out, I think tops because those last four are taking on steam slope there. So we won't have to do this.
The Canandaigua Lake authority recommended we.
But they didn't have.
Further until we get more information.
I thought they were there to face.
Other issues are great, it's a decent. Water supplies.
Masks and so on. Yeah, but again, that's.
That's an issue which. Whatever way they go, it's going to be the same.
It's the same number of.
Thanks to me, the question is which project is the property you want? I mean, we can't, we don't have the authority to say that beyond, we go to the traffic, the drainage, probably not any of it. It's the planning board.
I think the other thing, I mean, they own those acres, they have the right to the boat.
Maybe don't have the authority to do it now.
Should I go very easy to grant it?
Yes.
Save?
Yes.
Say yes.
Yes. Based on data, who goes the information presented night. On the drawing and site plans that we have. I think the benefit to the African. Outrage of Bedford into neighborhood. Okay, the totally, I mean, makes other variants. The way it's not a substantial variant because a lot of it's still the same.
That potentially reduce the amount of people are saying. And so, so that's, and they did read this a lot, like, or the last one, to make that, the same amount of houses that were. So they're small, the one that has the last set of the area.
Did, did you want to reference that the applicant demonstrated? Uh, that this, that this. Property wouldn't be viewed from the lake because of foliage, including winter pictures?
Yeah. That's fair to say. I think actually the. Conventional. It would have gone further up the hill.
And the last simple part were on the sleeper slope areas, which helps with this.
Anything else for us?
No, I think that should cover it.
Be reasonable development on future.
Thank you for coming tonight. You know, I encourage you to come to the planning board meeting. We'll discuss more details.
Yes, yeah.
With this really to say whether it could be a.
When is the next planning board meeting?
They've been once.
Yeah, they meet twice a month.
Tuesdays, second.
Whatever serves next one.
That like they're doing trust them.
Is it on it?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, November third.
November third.
Those meeting dates are on the timeline, I'm saying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll let you know.
Yeah, let me know. I'll be planning up here. How are you, Jeff? I have a kind of. Yeah, they'll come down. Don't make a tape. Alright, I'll keep an eye on it. See you have any problems.
Well, okay, our next.
Gentlemen, can you stay in conversation outside? Do you want to just pull up the map real quick? So you guys saw this last month as well. I think there was some more information. I mean, kind of walked through it. I don't know if the Marty knew about it that great.
He opened, but I don't know too much about this.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
So the, it's in the AR two, right? And the AR two is one of those more modern zoning districts that we have, and there are a few homes. On that side of the road, lots that are below that area. So if you could bring up the subdivision map, we can just kind of look at that. So what they're trying to do is get two buildable lots there and then keep the majority of the other parcel intact. One of the reasons for the, the sizing and not doing the two acres was to not extend it toward that pond. So whoever ends up, if they keep that lot or not, they kind of maintain. The ownership of the pond. So you can kind of see. We pushed it back because the lots are. We pushed it back. We're almost saving right in that pond. There are a lot of people with the two part backs and just want something at the road and it's very similar. They're almost. Larger than the homes that are there, lot size that goes to the north. So as far as. Character of the neighborhood in that area, they're, they're large, they're larger lots. To develop and I mean, that whole other side of the road is, is those townhomes. So like. It's really not going to change anything in the neighborhood. We have water, we have sewer, we have all the utilities. Yeah, that's that. And that's another reason we're not really kind of pushing. The, the lots wider because of that, that variance or that, the RG and year Sakani pipeline that runs through there. So it's kind of that narrow little area that we have. I mean. Could they do it a different way? They might be able to, but then you're talking a private drive and a few more homes and I don't want to go down that road. I think this is a better. Development because we can't really push farther down to the west anyway. So as far as development wise goes. It, it's similar at the buildings, the building lots themselves, the, within the setbacks, the footprints are almost the same size as the other lots that frontage. Along the west side of Brick Road Road. So it's definitely similar sized lots. So I think the best thing for us to do would be to try to get the variance instead of extending them all the way than. Having the pond issue with different people developing around the pond and having access to it. It just doesn't work well from what we've seen.
The only question is to me, if you're going to double size of the lots, which according to code, wouldn't need a variance. Then you're not going, they're not going to be developing around that pond anyway. I mean, what happens to that property? If we grant the variance, where does this go from there? I mean, what happens to that property? If we grant the variance, where does this go from there? We, we, we have enough, you know, we're talking about extending those, those lots that you've drawn out. Twice as much, right?
You would, you would double the lot size. You'd have to, to get under the variance to the west. It really, the usage doesn't change. There's no benefit to, to extending them other than to get around the variance, is what I'm saying.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, they're leaving a lot of property there. I mean, you worry about the pond.
It, what I'm saying is we, the reason for the variance was to maintain control of the pond and the areas around it. The development, more than likely, whoever buys these lots is going to develop near the road, because they're not going to push all the way far back, because you're getting into it. Correct, you're not going to, right. Right, so by keeping them closer to the, to the road and keeping them not to the two acres, to under the two acres. We're kind of keeping that ability for people to be back there and messing with the pond. They just didn't want to give up the control of the pond to two other parties. So really, I mean, you're really not changing the developmental way that these lots are going to be used. They're going to be. A single family home with sewer, water and gas. Well, probably not gas, because we won't be there.
I think what you're saying is, is not very well.
I understand what you're saying.
The remaining land.
Stays with the, the farmhouse that's there now. And the barn that's on the north. Now. There's no frontage. Right, that, that gets, that's, there's no more frontage on that parcel. It's been subdivided over the years.
Well, I'm just saying, if, if you double the size of a lot, you're going to go wait, you know. And that land is under control of each one of those individuals, instead of a lord knows who ends up with a, you know, with, with the property itself. I don't see the real benefit of making the lot small. Um, you know, to me. If, if you, if you make them, if you go according to code, you avoid the variance. It doesn't really affect, but you got more than enough property behind there.
Right. No, I understand where you're going with it, but it doesn't really affect what's developed, is what I'm saying, is the houses will stay in that area, but they're not. And when you start to deal with the ponds and access to ponds like that, you have people that start, well, I own technically get into the pond. I've seen it get to be a problem. If someone says they touch a pond, they feel like they can, you know, use it, and it, it creates. Safety issues. And by, by keeping it at the road, we remove all those issues that might happen. Yeah, I mean, that was the, that's one of the main reasons is. There's no other way other than going west to, to add the acreage. But there's really no benefit to, to any of the parties that would be involved in, in a sale or a house build. There's plenty of land there that can be used. And this is all the AR two was, it used to be, you know, like R thirty. Before the AR two district was, was developed. And it's not, you know, we're not changing any of the character of the neighborhood. I mean, we have to do variance. Yes, we know it's self-created, but this is the only.
Time was wrong, I'm back, really would be worried about.
I mean, would it make a difference if it was a little steep slope for, you know. There's always going to be something that, that ends up in it. I mean, it's a little interesting with that, a little key gas line going through there.
Well, I want to call that a teeny gas line.
And, and being so bad.
That's a big gas line.
Like the gas sign, they can't be gas.
Yeah, they can't tap into it. It's weird. No, it's, uh, it's one of the, it's just a transmission line.
So how far back would like? If, if you were to. What's the lot size now?
You, they're one acre. You double it. So you're getting into the topography of the pond and the wet-ish area.
How would you get to the one, two, one?
No, you're under three acres, so that doesn't count. It's a, if you're over three acres length times width counts. So we're still under that, as long as we're under the three acres. Hmm? It's pretty wet back there. It's a pond pond. They want to keep, they just, they're not planning on selling the, the overall property. It's just the two lots there, and they want to keep the pond intact.
It just seems like every time this, this comes back to bite the town somehow. If you, you know, if it's, if it's left there, then there's, you know, there's an extra, what, how many extra acres is that? That, that now even the opponent keeps. Versus.
Yeah, they'd have twenty acres instead of twenty-two. But I don't think it, it's the size of the, the parent parcels, not really not, I mean, it is more of the. The access to the pond and the outlining areas around it and safety issues and, and control of the pond. No, you run out after this, there, there's no more frontage. So the parcel is.
If, if doing a minimum size, and frankly, there's enough land to, to, to do that. And, and you.
And can be avoided.
And that's, that's what I'm trying to get to, and to me, if you double that one a lot, you're taking the whole pile. Problem solved.
Yeah.
Then he doesn't have to sell that lot.
About two fifty? You still, when you have to go back about three hundred feet, because the, the acre is, that two hundred and fifty-eight is the center line, so you gotta take out the thirty-three feet, so you'd probably be going back almost. Three, two hundred and two seventy-five, so you're more than doubling the length technically, but I mean, it's. Plus or minus.
Where, where do they come in, or is like way around?
They come away on the north, on the other side of the five of their lots. Yes, that is the farmhouse access.
People. Yeah, but see we.
I know. And I know the character.
The character of the neighborhood is a little tough.
I know, right?
Well, we want to be on the character neighborhood with seven houses over there. So it's a little bit less development than the character of the neighborhood.
See, you need to think behind a guy.
Or give him access to it.
What my current. Nice, somebody even decide.
All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to give you a little bit more information than you had from previous.
You gonna close the public hearing?
We'll close the public hearing, thank you.
Sunday.
We have sixty-two days in most of.
Yeah, it's so tight, it's months.
It's five, it's sixty-one.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it can be.
We've heard so many times that, you know. The ECB and everybody else is whenever it goes to go. This one to me is an easy enforcement call, and I don't think it affects anybody. Except for maybe access to the pond. Maybe other people don't want.
Of course, the ECB is supporting the system.
Well.
You try.
Pretty sure.
I mean, it's the same development either way. It's, it's going to be a single family house, close to the room, either way. Actually, I can, it's actually better because they give less lot coverage they're allowed, because they don't have two acres. I'm, I'm just fine. Just saying. Less land for lot coverage.
Okay, then, then already you see that.
Was in there twice.
Yeah, it's, the two lots are separate, right? Or they're the same?
This is. Now, it's interesting here, they talk about the town engineer, talk. Ad committee members suggesting smaller lot sizes.
Oh, I see what they're, yeah, right. Well, that could be actually a. That could be a kind of a. Losing two. So if they were, if you need bomb wire, they won't have them. You may not like to, right?
All supportive of the.
They did?
Yeah.
Yeah. One's driving open?
You know, it was interesting there.
When I read you just have any cases?
I agree, but that's not fine farming, like a third.
Natural resource.
It is in the NRI. Old fields.
Okay.
Sure, other question varies as we granted. Jason?
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Kelly? Yes. Chip?
Yes. Uh, based on the information that provided the last meeting. The benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood. Um, some character. Would not change the character of the neighborhood. It, uh. The pond, I think, yes, because I'm. It is a fact that I think this would allow the pond to remain would be larger farm. I mean, the land agriculture, but.
Well, they did, it, there was.
Where was that? Farm. And I don't. I think whether we, maybe there was still that far as far, if not. The housing itself.
And you can't build a platform. And, uh.
The power, yeah, power link restricts how wide they can make the plots. I guess, yeah.
You can't forget.
Let me ask this, um. You know, we're not going to say it has to be done in a year, because it might have to be sold in a year, right?
No.
Yes, I just, I just.
The subdivision would have to be filed within the years. The subdivision map would have to be filed.
Okay.
That's right.
Good, thank you.
Very. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the help tonight.
You spend a lot of time around here, maybe you're a gentleman.
Someday.
Yeah, I did look at it from the ECB perspective of that.
Yeah.
It was actually, that was very important to me.
In referrals and down board, the down manager or news committee. Uh, we still have the. Upstanding, um, facts and. Findings where it would be sold. You like this, person have that next time. Is that correct, Chris?
They, yeah, that'll be something for you to look forward to for your November meeting.
Wonderful.
Thank you. I have approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
I would.
You did.
Second.
I want favor. We still have no. Ultimate alternate.
Nothing. That I have no.
Now, just as everybody was sort of. I'm thinking to myself. Maybe at meetings we are. Say to the audience.
That's like you say, one more word.
Really, that's a good argument, follow him.
I think that's a good idea. You get some people into the law of experience.
Let's get that guy that wrote that really nice.
The guy who wrote the letter. I don't know if you saw the letter, but, uh. Yeah, doctorate, Will Manning.
That's what's called a ringer.
But anyway, I guess we might not have another way we can advertise except for. Set our, we can say in the.
Even these letters.
My penny saver. Give us on board. I'm quite sure it's fine. How about we put something penny saver?
Penny savers, are we still penny saver?
Yep.
Source of fires.
Yeah, you can look at the bags, like, I've been using passive old homework.
Uh, yeah, certainly can't hurt you with that. But I think starting next meeting, I will probably go ahead and announce.
Um, we all need to retire.
Glad that all of you were here tonight.
Yes.
Well, you saw it all, yeah.
Okay, you, you, you.
The other thing, no. Several of us. A little bit confused by the workspace.
Oh, my God. Well, you know what it was, they just got scrolling down.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that all had to do, we had the same issue, had to do with that, uh, pounding from, uh.
Was that, okay, so I, I knew it didn't look.
We had a lot of issues today. I, I, my keyboard would just stop working, the mouse stopped working.
Going back though, but on that workspace.
Yep.
It's not just things for this meeting.
Well, it is on the first three, but if you keep scrolling down, it's all the rest, so I have a smartphone, and so. So that's just our. Oh, yes. Basin in.
Roger.